I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Council meeting to order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Rizzi.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this very warm evening to perform city business. We and our staff ask for your oversight and understanding of the entire issues we are about to address. Help us make the correct decisions to meet the overall goal, what is best for everyone to get along together in our great community. We also ask for some cooler temperatures and something more of the rain that we saw briefly last night. We also ask for your oversight for our first responders as they deal with these temperatures. We extend this to all our firefighters that, as they continue to fight wildfires throughout our state. We also ask for your oversight for our military members and their families wherever they're serving throughout the world, in the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the agenda be accepted as presented and that the minutes of the regular meetings of August 4th be approved. Approval of the extinguishment of the federally patented easement for north half of the 33 easement located at 15th Avenue on Old West Highway to Wickiup Road be approved. Whoa. That the vacation of the dedicated right-of-way of the south half of the 33-foot right-of-way located at 15th Avenue from Old West Highway to Wickiup Road be approved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Announcements or current events, Councilmember Struble?
Just to let people know out there, just during these times, we've got, you know, obviously Genesis feeds people during the week, but we've got, the Salvation Army does it every other Sunday along with showers, and then at Genesis on the other Sunday, there's a nonprofit that feeds people that just might need some assistance during the weekends and stuff, so just make that available. If anybody knows anybody out there who might need some assistance on that, let them know we can get them in touch with the people and help people get fed and get some nourishment during the weekends also.
Councilmember Evans?
Not this week.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
I just want to remind everybody that, number one, there's, Robin and myself are running now for mayor, and we're running, this coming November is when the election is. Just asking that, because she's lost a lot of her signs and I've lost a lot of mine. I think people were trying to help us out by removing the signs, thinking that the election was over with. Well, unfortunately, us two have to continue on. So if you see our signs out there, and if they're down, please give us a call. We'll gladly go out and put them back up again. When yesterday, we had several of them down. But on the same token, it's, please leave them in place.
Councilmember Barker?
Diddle. Please, I spent about an hour today walking through part of the desert trying to find, because the wind blew so hard last night, trying to find two of the big signs that I had. I did find one, the other one is gone, but, yeah, it's kind of hard to keep them up with the wind and the sun, et cetera, but then when folks try to help us out by taking them down, it makes it even worse. So I would appreciate that, and thank you, Chip.
Councilmember Schroeder? Nothing, Your Honor. And I have nothing either, so we're going to let Councilmember Rizzi go last, who has a pretty special one today.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, we have some members here from the Apache Junction Drug Prevention Coalition, if they'd like to come forward. We have a nice donation for our local DARE program, and I'm not sure who we have here.
Marty and Troy are both here.
We have a check for $5,000 to our local DARE program, and again, this is the Apache Junction Drug Prevention Coalition. We have Shelley Verly, our chair, Robert Mach, a founding member, Gil Cropper, and myself, and Your Honor, if you'll join us, thank you.
Do you want to do a photo first and then have her talk? Let's do a photo first and then we'll let you speak at the end. How's that? Yeah, just speak into it that way, that way the cameras can get you.
I wish I could put that on again, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize what we have standing here, the people, myself excluded, but Bob and Krista and Gil have been a part of this coalition from the very beginning in 2008, and they still carry that mantle to this day, and I just wanted to recognize and appreciate all of their efforts. Their impact on this community is completely immeasurable and very difficult to express in words, so I just wanted to express my appreciation, the community's appreciation, for all of their hard work and efforts. And I do have something for you, I just didn't want to carry it all up here, but I have something to show, just a token of my appreciation. And as far as the DARE program goes, that program is just so incredibly worthy. I've been in education for 30 years, so I've seen how dynamic it is, how it impacts kids, and how it went from teaching peer resistance, yes, teaching drug, being able to be aware of the dangers of drug use, yes, but most recently, it is now teaching a complete decision-making model where any choice that a child is faced with at that age, child, youngster, I should say, this model just helps them make better choices all the way around. And even, even more recent, with the COVID situation, they are now looking for ways to reach out to kids even though they can't right now be in the classroom. So it's just a very, very worthy cause, and we're very honored to be able to provide this donation, and we know it will be well spent, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did just speak with Officer Harshman, and they do have plans to do it virtually if they never do get back into the classroom this year, so. City manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. I just wanted to say thank you and extend my gratitude to the Apache Junction Drug Coalition. Shelley, thank you for this donation and for all the work that's going on out there. A good majority of the phone calls that we get and responses that the police department has comes from issues related to substance abuse, and the ability to teach early on and to educate is essential, and we thank you very much for your donation. I also want to provide an observation, what I just saw tonight, in that we have two individuals in this community that are running for office, for the mayor, the highest office in our community, work together and outline and describe in partnership like how to do an election. So proud of this community, so proud that we have groups that want to come in to their elected officials and donate, we have individuals that are running on partisan election to help their community, to impact the data, things that we do that matter most, water, providing safe, drinkable waters, sewer service. Imagine what would happen if that didn't go away, being able to drive our roads, call 911, being able to have a Parks Department, Library Department, think about the things that go on, and so just wanted to share that observation as two councilmembers or Councilmember Vice Mayor work, go through the election. My report tonight, Your Honor, deals with single-family home permits. We're at about the six-month mark where we do an annualized, or a review of building, and every once in a while, people ask, the city manager asks me, how are single-family homes going, building permits in the city? So at this time last year, we had done 66 of single-family home permits, and at this same time now this year, we have done 100. So the building continues, continues to go, about a 52% increase. Those numbers show that there is demand for that. I do see numbers in that the rents and housing costs are going up, and so that's another issue that you deal with often, is affordable housing, workforce housing, and so it's something that we watch often for our community. So I wanted to report on that and let you know how that's been going on, and I conclude my report tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Public hearing, presentation, discussion, and consideration of resolution number 2027, renewing the Old West Highway redevelopment area, Elon.
Your Honor, members of council, I'm here to bring back a redevelopment area that was approved in 2018, May of 2018. We're bringing this back primarily due to Arizona statute that was brought forth that would require us to renew these by October of 2020 so that they could stay in a 10-year renewal cycle rather than moving to a five. So that's what brings us here today. This will be an item for discussion and action, so vote on this to renew. The boundaries are represented in the map that you can see on your screen here. They encompass a portion of our downtown and a couple of areas that were in prior redevelopment areas. In these areas, we've seen activity in the past, sidewalks, streetlights, streets, improvements, so on and so forth, some blight removal, and some new development, go on. Part of what we do in establishing an RDA is look at a, this general area to determine whether or not there is need for redevelopment area to be established on it. Primary areas that we look at are roadway, streetlights, sidewalks, and residential. What you guys see here, roadways, after a study was done, about 30% of the roadways are determined to be deteriorated. In your packets, attachments, C, there's some pages that describe exactly what that means, but generally speaking, roadways have what they call alligatorine, or large cracks, so on and so forth, that would require improvements or to be done. Streetlights, 84% of the streetlights in this area are considered substandard, sidewalks, 86% of the sidewalks are considered substandard, deteriorated, or and/or missing. And then residential and commercial, there are buildings, basically, we look at buildings not necessarily based on the value of the building, but on the types of repairs that might need to be done to those buildings at any given point in time, or at the given point in time that we did the survey. Based on that, there's an entire list of housing and what those determinations look like. This does not indicate that the housing is substandard or above standard, it's just based on these qualifications. Specifically, evaluations based on dollar amounts for repairs, so anything over $15,000 worth of repairs puts them into different categories, and that can be an air conditioning system that's going out. So just so that, so that you as council understand that, and as well as the residents that see this. We can go through the facts on redevelopment area if you feel it necessary, Your Honor. If not, I can move forward, but generally speaking, what we're looking for in redevelopment area is the ability to spend community development block grant funds to improve streets, sidewalks, lighting, and remove blight.
So we did discuss this in a work session, correct?
We did, yes.
I did have one question. Now, President Trump came up with the opportunity zones, and this is one of the only opportunity zone we have in Apache Junction also. Has there been any inquiries into utilizing that?
So as far as opportunity zones, we have had developers that have come in and have interest in that. Generally speaking, opportunity zones, they were identified, the state asked us to submit parcels that fit a specific demographic, so lower income or, you know, various items, that within the Y fit those criteria that the feds were looking for. The state did choose that one to become an opportunity zone. What we're finding is that there are developers that have interest to understand that better, but generally speaking, the opportunity zones, as developers come in, they're looking for opportunities to reinvest capital gains funds. Most developers, though, do not have, the opportunity zones require a opportunity fund, an investment group that's already established, to take in their funds, and many of the developers don't have that knowledge or don't have those, that connection established yet, so it's a tool that developers are trying to learn quickly, but the opportunity zones themselves are timing themselves out. So it's a 10-year process, and the greatest value is if you came in on day one. And so, yes, there is interest, but it's not necessarily, it has not yet spurred a new development in Apache Junction.
Thank you.
Any questions on this slide? I know there's a lot of information, but generally speaking, these are these factors that we look at to determine redevelopment area necessity.
Any questions or discussion before we go to the public hearing? Robin?
Yeah. We approved this in 2018, correct?
Correct.
So what have we done since 2018 to meet some of these needs that were laid out for this redevelopment area?
So there have been several, there's several ways that we look at improvements that have occurred and have been spurred in these areas. So removal of blight, redevelopment, we've seen several private development come in, so along Apache Trail, we've had Dutch Brothers come in, we have Philiberto's that is coming in and raising a building and building a building on the corner of Idaho and Old West Highway. We've got some apartments that are going in just off of Old West Highway, right in the back behind Fry's. If you look up north, you'll see a couple-story apartment building that's going in there. We've had sidewalks that have been improved along Old West Highway, we've had median improvements that have occurred along Apache Trail. So there's a lot of smaller pieces that have gone in, in various areas. Obviously, it's a large, if we look at the numbers, 86 and 84% on sidewalks and streetlights, there's a large amount that can be done, but it...
And we have a new project on sidewalks that will come in next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as far as, as far as all that goes, there's definitely improvements that are being made. There's a plan that's laid in place to talk about the things that should be done, I apologize, I went through that really fast, but the objectives of that plan is removal of slum and blight, land assembly, quality housing, public services, and then utilization of CDBG and/or JIPlet, which is an economic development tool. Public notices are required. They did go out on the 14th of July and the 21st of July in the Arizona Republic, and a mailing went out on the 13th of July to all of the, all of the landowners that were associated, that we had information from the county's database. I have received calls or had conversations with three different individuals from the public, and their primary questions or concerns related to, hey, you guys aren't going to turn this into an urban area here, right? This isn't what this is all about. And essentially, the answer to the public has been, no. In fact, you guys are voting on a general plan, and it was just voted on and approved. Any improvements or any, anything that would be done in this area would follow that, that general plan. So. That's the end of my presentation. Just one small note in regards to a comment that Councilmember Barker asked last time about, did we re-update that whole table of buildings? We did. I did notice on one of the pages on Attachment C, I did not update the date from 2017 to 19, so there is an update on that page in the packet that the mayor would sign, assuming you guys approve it.
Any more questions? If not, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing. Approach the podium.
Joe Schroeder, 2444 West Virginia. Now, Ms. Patel is no longer with us. Question, who's, who's getting, who's asking for grant money? Who's, you know, who's applying for grant money? What kind of grant money? He says there's opportunities. My neighborhood's an opportunity. We pay taxes. My streets have not been done in 45 years. Delaware's a disaster, it's a racetrack, wiped out my yard for the fourth time. When do we get our streets done? You know, you people seem to throw money around at something that's not going to happen for the next 20 years. What about my streets? My streets, they're disappearing, they're gone. When? When, when, when do we get our turn? Listen, I've been up here a long time. I've been here 37 years. When is it our turn? It's not fair, you know, talk about money. My neighborhood's an opportunity. We pay taxes. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number 20-27, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, renewing the Old West Highway redevelopment area be approved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Okay, the next three items are all public hearings, so we're going to unite the public hearing of all three items, I'm going to read what they'll be. Number eight is public discussion, the hearing and consideration of resolution number 2024, declaring a public record document filed regarding noise. And number nine, ordinance number 1492, amending city code, and item number 10, 1493. Joel, do you want to kick this off? And we did discuss this again last night in the work session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member of Council. Matt, can, I forgot how to turn this on, it's been a while. I'll stand for this one, but I'm going to sit down for the next one, that's going to take a lot longer, hopefully not too long. You asked me to amend some things from last night, so I did, and the first page, this is page four, and that was three different items that said rural, we took that out, since rural is really part of a subset of residential, so we did that. And then for the bigger item. Okay. This is under investigation, so you have three sections, but there's two that are affected. At one point, we had discretion for an officer in here, and council talked about that last night to take that out. So essentially, if there's a decibel violation, the officer will give the person a warning, so they get a free warning, essentially. What council wanted at that point, and I did send this to staff, and they agreed with the language, just to let you know, in case you don't like it, I don't want to get completely bland, because counsel, some staff members liked it, actually, all of them did. The question was, well, what happens in the next 60 days? If there's no violation in the next 60 days from that first warning, then, and then they have a, say they have a violation on day 62, the officer comes out, does the decibel reading, says, okay, you have a violation. The code says they get another warning. That's what, that's what you all wanted. So if there's a violation two days later, the officer comes out, does the decibel reading, says, okay, you're in violation. The code says if you haven't had a violation in the past 60 days, then I could have given you another warning, but it's only been two days. So I'm sorry, you're going to get a citation, or a long-form complaint if the person can't be located. And so that's what this language does, and I hope, hopefully it's clear enough, but we can write it any way you want, but I think that's what the council wanted. And you wanted to take the discretion away from the officer so that the officer is not placed in a very awkward position. Commander Freeman was here last night, but I'm sure Commander Mullander will say the same thing, that puts the officer in a very difficult position when they have to decide, you know, should this person get another warning? Well, this is the second one. Well, that's okay. The third one? Well, okay. Fourth one, and then, and it's all going to be documented in what's called a computer-aided dispatch system, so the officer, when they get there, will know how many warnings were given and when they were given. So this takes the discretion out of that, and if there's any questions, I do have, there's also a clean copy that I also have provided you. So all the other red lines and highlighting were accepted.
Okay, any discussion before we go to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd like to see on the, number one, I'd like to see the word "further" changed to "other." I think it reads easier that way.
Okay.
It doesn't change the meaning, it's just a little bit easier to see where you're going.
And if there's any amendments, any floor amendments that were, sounds like you're going to make, they do have to be included in the motion, and you do have to refer to the version 81720, requested changes for the 81820 public hearing.
Robin, what about the word additional?
Or additional, either one, yeah, I had both of them here. Whichever. What does the council wish?
Which one clarifies it more, that there's only one warning within 60 days? Other or additional?
I think additional might be a little smoother.
Okay.
Compounds.
That works. Works for me.
Any more discussion? Okay, this is the public hearing, would anyone like to speak on any of these three items? And we'll need the name and address of the speakers.
My name is Dirk Begerman of 1522 East 22nd Avenue. There's a clause in this that says that if my property has a higher decibel level tolerance, and it's next to a property such as a residential which has a lower, that I'm in compliance, but not in compliance on the residential property, I'm going to be penalized because the residential property's lower than my industrial zone property? Yes. Sound projected from the property within one zoning district into another property within another zoning district of a lesser sound level limit will be, or shall not exceed such lesser sound limit. Does that make sense to you? I'm in compliance on my property, but not in compliance to my neighbor's property, and I'm going to get in trouble? It doesn't make sense to me. You all figure it out.
Joel, do we have the copy, can I, am I allowed to ask?
Yeah, we're, the public hearing's still going on, but we have a question.
Do we have a copy of that, the sheet that, with the decibel readings that would say this is a skateboard, this is a car, that we could put up on the?
I believe it is. If not, hold on a second.
Just wondered if we had that with us.
Here, I got it. I got it. I, I got it. I think you're looking for this one.
Just for the public, in case they had any questions of what different everyday sounds made, thank you for that.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak on this? Mr. Barlett had a request here, so this will supersede for call to the public, right? You want to speak now?
Oh, not now.
Yeah, go ahead now, yes. It'd be better now. And we need your name and address.
All right. I'm Jeff Barlett. I'm at 108 North Meridian Drive, apartment 220 in Apache Junction, Arizona. And I'd like to, I just keep this short and simple for you. First thing I'd like to say is that I personally feel that this should be a civil matter and should not be a criminal violation. I also feel that the fines should not be excessive on this, and I also feel that we should support officer discretion, and that it would give our police officers who serve and protect us every day, the decision to decide if this should be a violation or not, to be able to issue, decide if they should issue a citation, and thank you very much.
For the record, I too supported the discretion, but we, I kind of felt like, no, I didn't have any support up here for that. So, anyone else?
Mr. Mahmoud Moudine, 2304 North Cortez Road, Apache Junction, Arizona. I am agreed with Mr. Dirk Beggeman, is a commercial and residential. Commercial is a 65 decibel, the residential attached to, if one's a 60. And every three feet drop the decibels. And if they are in their property, they are sitting over there, we are already giving the residential people from their footstep to 20 feet. And that's not fair, giving them the time, if the people sitting inside of the house claiming on it, still we give them a 20 feet to check outside. If they can't sit inside and sleep, or turn their TVs up, you guys see there are about 400 reports, we have to turn the TVs off, we can't hear anything inside of the house, but still we giving them the gray spear for the 20 feet. And that's not fair to the people, that you guys issue license, permits, legally operating the businesses, and still jeopardizing their businesses in this situation, and practically seem like it is going one sided direction, has to be fair to the both parties. If they are sitting inside the house, or they're sitting in the backyard, have to be measured. Just Chris Terizzi and other council members, Gayle Evan, questioned the Mary Copac County Police Officer, Sheriff, where you guys measured it. Their exact wording was a recorded statement, we go inside of the house to take a decibel meter readings. If we are following the county lines, we should be following those, all that stuff for the county, what they do when they check out the decibels and noise ordinance. And this decibel meter need to be, had to be the same way where the properties are attached to, attached residential or commercial. Is a big difference. For example, handlebar, exactly the same situation. They are completely attached to it. And it's not going to be fair to them. On my property, this, I have about 473 yards to getting over there. I will be safe. I designed my system, I'm not worried about it. But other question I'm going to have to all of you guys, if the decibel meter for the music or announcer is, does not exceed more than 65, if the public sitting over there watching entertainments, if public make the noise, nobody have a control on the public, what they're going to do, are the public is going to get the citation, or the owner of the business going to get citation? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have stated many times, I've lived out here 37 years, the police, either through my neighbors or some other moron, has a complaint about my music. Well, last time it was my TV. It was an Emmy, it was an Emmy Award or something. And he comes, he comes, he keeps coming closer to the house, he still couldn't hear it, but yet I'm the bad guy. You're making too much fun. Blah, 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 because he favored my neighbor. Anyway, so, I could tell you this, I've been pretty good over these, all these years. I can hook up my amplifier, you can hear it from here if I, if I so desire. I would tell you this, if you can't hear it from here, don't come knocking. You, it just won't pay for you. Don't come knocking.
Anyone else?
Darrell Cross, 1018 North Caser Road, Apache Junction. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate all the hard work you've put into this ordinance that you're proposing tonight. It's, it's been a long time, sort of, coming, and it's, you know, the, the work that you guys have done has been really good, and we appreciate it. One of the things that I noted last night's meeting is that it was brought up that we try and, and duplicate some of the other ordinances in other cities regarding decibel levels, and making those decibel levels as low as 40 or 45 decibels. We're not other cities. We're not Gilbert. We're not Tempe. We are Apache Junction. I want us to stay unique. I want us to remain Apache Junction. I don't want us to be Scottsdale. I want us to be Apache Junction. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I think Mr. Moudine made a valid point about vehicles in a business's parking lot, but by the time the police responded, odds are those vehicles would be gone, right? Unless they were out playing their radio or something loud in the parking lot, so, any thoughts on that? Obviously, the business shouldn't be cited for an obnoxious person in the parking lot.
Maybe Commander Mullander could speak on that. Just to put you on the spot here, sorry.
Mayor and Council, yes, if we respond to a parking lot where the disturbance is being caused by someone in the parking lot, they would be the one that we address our actions toward, not the business owner. As long as the business owner is, is still in compliance, then it would be the person causing the disturbance.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, if you would stay for just a minute. What about crowds? Mr. Moudine had also brought up, you know, if you have a crowd of people, and the people are yelling or whatever, I understand that it's up to the business owner to, you know, try to control if there's an issue, but that's also a good point with, is that, does that fall true to the parking lot situation, or is that different now?
I would have to read the statute a little bit more. I haven't read up on it quite as much as I probably should have, but it depends. It depends if, if there's a group of people in the parking lot causing the disturbance, or if it's because of the vent and the business owner, and what's going on inside the business.
Okay. And, thank you, thank you for that. And then, Your Honor, I just wanted to make another comment for the people that commented during the public hearing. We appreciate that a lot. I wish more people would come to our public hearings and speak, because as council members, we don't always catch it all. We, we read through this stuff, and we mull it over, and we talk about it, and we, and we do the best that we can, but sometimes things, scenarios don't necessarily come to mind, or we did, we just don't catch it. And so when you people from the public come and talk to us at these public hearings, we appreciate that. It, it makes us think about something that we may not have realized. So thank you for everybody that came to speak.
Does anyone want to address the issue Mr. Beggeman brought up?
It's a tough one. It is a tough one, and, and, you know, we, we tried very hard, I think, to accommodate, like, the, the issue of crossing the line in the lower one, with commercial and residential, by making them both the same, so that there would not be that issue. And the, we, we're darned if we do and darned if we don't. That's basically where we're going to sit with this. And whatever we change or don't change, there's going to be a group of people who find that not palatable. And, and I noticed today a lot of chatter about that we were suddenly creating a noise ordinance to get rid of bars. That was what was coming down, and, you know, this is basically the same noise ordinance we've had. The only big difference is we haven't put our police officers in the middle of any situation. We've said, here's an instrument, take the instrument, measure it, you know, so.
And as Mr. Cross stated, this would be more lenient than the other eastern cities.
Definitely. It is more lenient.
Yes. Anyone else, before we go to motions?
Your Honor, the reason that I wanted the diagram of the different noise levels put up for the public was that, I think it was 60 for just normal conversations even. And so, yes, we're being lenient, but when you consider that diagram, moderate to quiet conversation is 60 dBa, that's something to think about. And the average car's going down the road. I mean, cars go down the road, they make noise. Everything makes noise, and so that's a tough call with the commercial residential, when you, when you look at the, the numbers on this diagram here, and look at what we have when we have all these different businesses that, that back up to residences, it's, it's definitely something to think about. And nobody's going to be happy, whichever way we go, Robin, you're right.
No, it's, you know, I'm watching my really cheapy decibel reader here, and with the microphones, et cetera, we're, we're sitting at about 60. 59 points, something is pretty much the average up here. But, yeah, we're, we're going to upset somebody.
And?
I want to make a comment concerning the, I'm going to kind of go off the scale a little bit, but for general information, your household refrigerator generates about 55 dB in the house. Laughter, you know, we tell a joke and start laughing, is anywhere from 60 to 65 dB normally. It, it depends on the, I'm going to say, and those measurements are done approximately three foot away from the, the, the person or the refrigerator. A vacuum cleaner is roughly 70 to 75 dB, and, you know, those are things that we're normally being around. Lawnmower in a blender is roughly 90 dB, and they are quite loud. And we're not having any, you know, right now, our highest that we would allow is 75 dB in, in a commercial, excuse me, in a industrial area.
70.
70.
70. So it, it is, I'm going to say, very lenient. It is trying to work with the community to come up with what's best for not only the businesses, but also the, the residents of the area, in, in trying to get this set up so that we can all, I would say, meet the, the goal of getting along and, and working together as a community.
Okay, so, City Manager Powell, this will only be complaint driven. Our police officers are not going to sit at businesses and try to catch people being loud, correct?
That is correct.
I just noticed a trombone. Can kids practice at home?
Sure, because we're, we're not talking about having a reader three feet away from the noise. We're talking about having a reader quite a distance away.
Yeah, and they should be in their room with their door locked.
Oh, locked?
Pillows in the cracks, yes. Okay, any more discussion before we go to motion on item number eight? I'll ask for a motion.
I need to know which one needs the amendment in it, Joel?
That would be number nine.
Okay.
Because what you're doing there is you're adopting by reference that certain document, which happens to be this document that's referenced. And so I gave you, at the top, it said, well, if you want to change that word to, to additional, then you'll reference the 81720 requested changes for the 81820 public hearing. And in section one, where further is currently listed, replace with additional.
Okay. Sure.
Do you want the title of the actual document? It's?
I just wanted to know which one it was. I didn't know whether it was eight, nine, or 10.
And the title is the 2020 amendments, it's in the title of the, of the ordinance.
Got it. I see it now. Thank you. You want a motion on eight?
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that resolution number 20-24, declaring as a public record, that certain document filed with the city clerk, entitled 2020 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter 11, Noise, be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
On this one, yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
The next one would be item number nine, 1492.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1492, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, by adding new Chapter 11, Noise, and adopting by reference that certain document filed with the city clerk, entitled 2020 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter 11, Noise, providing for severability, and providing for penalties, repealing any conflicting provisions, be approved with the following amendment that...
Actually, are we doing the read by title only first? Jennifer?
There is no read by title only here.
You are correct. I missed that in the motion.
Yeah, there should be for an ordinance, so.
Oh, okay. Well, then I move that, that, that ordinance, number 1492, be read by title only. Right?
And then there's the second part to it after your vote.
Roll call.
All right. Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
This is only reading?
Just reading the title. Don't make her read the whole thing.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
So if I said no, you'd have to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I only have the first bit.
I know, you do. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number 1492, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, by adding new Chapter 11, Noise, and adopting by reference that certain document filed with the city clerk, entitled 2020 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter 11, Noise, providing for severability, providing for penalties, and repealing any conflicting provisions.
So now, what do you want? She just read the motion that's on here.
Now the actual motion.
Well, now, now you do the motion that incorporates the title to the document, and then add in the additional language.
Okay, so you want me to read the same thing she just read? Because that's what I have.
Your first motion was, you were, you were there.
Okay, okay, then... Okay, okay, then, I move that ordinance number fourteen ninety-two, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, by adding new Chapter Eleven, Noise, and adopting by reference that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled twenty twenty amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Eleven, Noise, providing for severability, providing for penalties, repealing any conflicting provisions, be approved with the following amendment that a change from the eight seventeen twenty, requesting changes for eight eighteen twenty public hearing, page five, paragraph one, the word "further" be changed to "additional." Be approved.
I heard a second, roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
I'm gonna say no, and I wanna explain why. I think in doing this, we got a lot of, lot of things right. Staff put a lot of work into this in a short period of time. In our city, we have a noise problem with one business and one neighborhood, and that's why we're here. Our previous noise ordinance had worked for a number of years. This brings us in to twenty twenty using a decibel meter and taking it out of the officer's discretion. I'm not comfortable with the decibel chart that we have. Like Mr. Mohadine said, I liked what Pinnell County had used, which is what we were originally gonna follow. We eliminated a residential rural designation and made it just residential, and we made residential the same decibel numbers as commercial. And there's no way that our rural areas, and just pick Ironwood and Brown, Ironwood and Lost Dutchman, they should be subject to the same noise level as a commercial building? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. When Mr. Cross brought up what I said last night about what other cities did, that was to show that residential had a different designation from commercial, that has a different designation from industrial. We didn't get that piece of it right. I like the way the county did it, we're not a county, we're a city. I think we need to do what's good for us, but I don't think this piece of it, we got right, so I'm gonna say no.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes six to one.
And fourteen ninety-three?
And Mayor, on this one also, we need to do one...
Title only?
By title only, and then the main one.
We have a motion on title only.
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number fourteen ninety-three be read by title only.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Title, title.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
All right.
Now, the actual motion?
No, no.
Read it first.
Ordinance number fourteen ninety-three, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Ten, Offenses, Article Ten dash one, Offenses General, by repealing and replacing in its entirety, Section Ten dash one dash twelve, Noise, subsection A, providing for severability, providing for penalties, and repealing any conflicting provisions.
Now, the motion.
Can I say ditto? Okay, ordinance number fourteen ninety-three, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Ten, Offenses, Noise, subsection A, providing for several abilities, sorry, providing for penalties, and repealing any conflicting provisions, be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Consideration of approval for resolution number twenty twenty-nine, declaring and adopting the results of the election. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. So, before council this evening is the resolution twenty twenty-nine, which is the city's formal process of acknowledging the election results of the primary election, also known as the canvas of election. Few things I would like to point out is that this year, from two thousand eighteen, Apache Junction had over fourteen hundred new registered voters. So, your total registered voters with active and inactive is twenty-three thousand seven hundred. You had an increase of one thousand six hundred twenty-eight ballots cast, and that was a three percent increase from two thousand eighteen, so you have a voter turnout of twenty-nine percent. In order to be directly elected as mayor, the candidate needed to at least receive three thousand one hundred and seventy-nine votes. And as we know, we did not have any candidates receive that number, and therefore, we will have a general election November third for mayor with Vice Mayor Wilson and Councilmember Barker as the candidates. We did have three council seats filled with this election, and the results are in the canvas, the resolution as well. I will also note that at the time that the agenda packet went out, we did not have the canvas from Maricopa County, so there are an additional eleven pages from Maricopa County. There are certain requirements that they have to provide when we canvass this election, and that is all in this new resolution that I have for the mayor to sign this evening, and I emailed that to you this afternoon, so I do apologize, it was rather late, but we didn't have canvas till after Friday. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution number twenty dash twenty-nine, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Pinnell and Maricopa Counties, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August fourth, two thousand twenty. Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
This council's gonna change a lot, we have three brand-new members, don't we? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Motion's unanimous, Your Honor?
Selections of meeting dates and times.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at six p.m. and a work session at seven p.m. for Monday, August thirty-one, two thousand twenty, and an executive session at six p.m. and a work session at seven p.m. for Tuesday, September one, two thousand twenty, be held in the city council conference room in the city council chambers located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings if necessary.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion carries.
This is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker, I have two, and the first one is CJ Handley.
How you guys doing? CJ Handley, sixteen fifteen North Apache Trail, here in Apache Junction. So, recently, at my family restaurant, Philly's Roadhouse, we had a fire that burned down a duplex that's on my property. That duplex sits inside of an easement on the north side of my property, and Rudy from Planning told me that in order to have it removed, ultimately, the council is gonna make the decision on whether or not we can remove that easement. Planning does not want to do this. In the past, I met with them and they told me it wasn't a problem to have it removed, but in the last year, they said they had removed some easements to where in the future they thought they may not wanna do that, because in the future, they may need these different easements. For the businesses, all three businesses that share this easement, two of which are to the north of it, one is RV store, or Windmill RV Storage, and the other one is BJ Taylor's Gift Store. Both of them that share the easement have buildings that go through the easement. So, if a road were ever to be built on it, it would devastate both of those two businesses. So, making a road there from both of them honestly doesn't make a lot of sense. For the Windmill Storage, he has at least a hundred yards of cinder block wall and awnings that provide shade for all of the RVs that he stores on his lot. If the road were to go through, it would probably take out about ten thousand square feet of his storage area. For Mr. Taylor, he would lose half of the building where he does his business for his gift shop. For us at Philly's Roadhouse, it went through, the duplex that it took out, I'm sorry, let me read from this. The fire happened on June twenty-second, and the duplex sits inside of the easement. So, since more than fifty percent of the building was burned down, it loses the grandfather clause that the building has.
Keep going.
Sorry.
It's red.
Yeah, okay, no problem. So, it takes out more than, since the building, when it burned down, more than fifty percent of it was gone, it took out the grandfathered action of the building being able to rebuild inside of the easement. So, it makes it so that I cannot rebuild the building. The insurance did give me the money to rebuild it, but they didn't give me enough to relocate it, as was suggested by Rudy in planning. And so, I will altogether lose that building, which is pretty detrimental for my business, 'cause then I lose the rents. And it also takes out about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of property value that I have from having that duplex on my property. So, to us, it doesn't make, it doesn't seem to make any sense to have a road go through there. So, I really would like you to let us get rid of that, what was the right word, to extinguish that easement, so that we can go ahead and rebuild the duplex where my two ladies that have worked for me for the last eight years live, and, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mike Parr.
I'm Mike Parr, one zero two four South Cedar Street. Here advocating for we, the people, of Apache Junction. I have a proposal, basically. My proposal is to have a flag put up on Flatiron Park. And I'm not talking about a normal flag, I'm talking about a giant flag, a fifty by eighty-foot flag, flying high in the air. Let's say, probably about a hundred fifty, two hundred feet in the air. I think that's gonna be a great, for the veterans who go there, good pictures, silhouette of the Superstition Mountains with the big flag, the biggest in Arizona. So, I mean, that's just my proposal. I don't have much, that's just it. And it's for the people. Nothing comes from the city, it's gonna be donations, fundraisers, for, from the people. So, it's gonna be our flag, Apache Junctions. That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone care to respond?
Joel, I have a question. Does prescriptive easement come into place with the problem for Phillies?
Well, under the open meeting law, we cannot discuss the issue, however...
But we can look into that.
You could direct, you can direct the city manager to look into discussion about a federally patented easement extinguishment. And he could do that, he could direct his staff to do that, and to get in touch with...
We could certainly get Emile or Raquel. We would recommend Emile and Raquel at this point to get involved.
Perfect, thank you.
We'll do that. If no one else, I would like to respond. So, I'm aware of the discussion and proposal on the flag, and it has already hundreds and hundreds of residents that have supported this. The VFWs and the Legion are basically already on board, and people wanna get behind this. And this would not supersede the flags already at the focal point, which are very appropriate for ceremonies, but it would be a tremendous draw and a source of pride. So, Bryant, can we direct this to staff, to, or direction to staff, to see if we could then have the Parks and Rec Commission, or the Arts Commission, or possibly both, to see about the feasibility of it, what would it take architecturally and the price? And there would be a lot of questions down the road, how long would this flag last? How long would, how to be replaced? Where would the funds come for replacement? Would there be a perpetual fund to do this? It would be way up there, what about lightning storms, things like that? How would it be grounded? So, there would be a lot of research in this, but from what I could tell, people would really like to see this be discussed, so.
Yeah, so outlined in city code, where the call to the public is to direct city manager to bring back, to receive, something like this does have implications, and so, you might wanna direct staff to spend some time and doing some research.
So, but we have to have that at a council meeting to do direction to staff, so if you would get that on the agenda?
Correct, I'll get that on the agenda for September first, to receive direction, so that staff can get forward, looking forward, just like we did for service signs, or like we did for dark sky ordinance, or any other number of items.
Krista, you raising a finger?
I just, I just had a comment about that. I remember on US sixty, I believe it was down by Mesa Drive, if it was a Ford Motor Company or something, that had a humongous flag out there, and there was nothing more beautiful than watching that flag wave in the wind.
And that flag was a tiny forty by sixty.
Oh, my.
Which is where the fifty by eighty number comes into play.
Neat.
And it could be used, I mean, just think of Owl's possibility with Owl to market this.
Yeah.
Okay. So, with that, we will be adjourned.